Are we about ready, Alyssa? I'm guessing we're ready. All right, well, welcome, everybody. It's the Thursday, December 3, 2020. This is our work session. We have up tonight at 3:30. We have three half-hour work session, council chamber technology discussions, Eighth Street Crossing Development, and then boards and commissions. So let's get to it. We're going to be running through some stuff pretty quick. Council chambers technology discussion. Is this Deborah?
Okay, and Alyssa is going to help me with this one. Thank you, Alyssa. I think you guys had asked if there was a way for us, once we get back into council chambers, to keep a really strong component of, you know, public interaction online. When we quickly, A, the whole system was the original system anyway, from when the building was built together and was held together with duct tape, duct tape and Band-Aids anyway. When, so it had to be updated. When we had to quickly go to virtual, I think we did some things that are really hard to undo. So now it really needs to be fixed before we go back in there. I think, you know, we're happy to bring back ideas on what it, A, we need to fix it, and then we want to fix it in a way so that you guys are happy with the final outcome. I think we're here today to kind of get from you what you want that to look like, so then we can bring you back options. Did all that make sense? Okay, so I think we're here to listen while you guys tell us a little bit more about what you think you want, and then we'll bring back what we think is possible.
Go ahead, Shelley.
Okay, and I'm happy to kick this off because I think I brought it up last time. I guess what I'm looking for is, I agree, Deborah, our system is old. You know, I look at our, like, I remember when we were long ago, when we had meetings in the council chambers. You know, I was always kicking and getting caught up in the wires underneath the desk. We had these big CPU kind of old computers. I think everything's on laptops now. I don't know why. Maybe there's some reason we would need a CPU there or a regular computer, you know, system there. You know, I personally am fine just using my own laptop for the council meetings that we have. I don't know. I want to hear from the rest of council how they feel about that, but I use my own laptop for everything. And that with Civic Clerk, we can log on to the meetings. So, and I remember our video system was kind of old. Sometimes you could hear it great. Sometimes you couldn't. The screen behind us is awkward because we have to turn around to see things. You know, Carbondale Council Chambers, they have these really nice couple of big LED screens that, you know, the price seems to have come way down in the recent years. And they have one that faces council and one that faces the audience. So it makes it really easy. And I know now, even in the last eight months, the technology for these types of meetings that we're doing have just taken leaps and bounds as far as participation and everything like that. So what I'm personally looking for is that when we go back, we can maintain an online audience participation in some form for our constituents so that they can log on from home, listen to the meeting, even submit comments or public comment. And just that we can maintain that even when we go back to in-person meetings. And I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I think you're right, Deborah. We're due for a revamp and an upgrade anyway. So let's go top-of-the-line technology as much as we can afford and kind of set the bar high for transparency and engagement and openness with all of our public.
Other comments? Shelley, did you have another comment? Okay, sorry, your hand went up. Go ahead, Paula.
No, I do feel like we should move forward where there's some kind of engagement where people can do more online than just watch a video, which I think is what it was before. Is that correct, Deborah? We were streamed, but there was no possibility for interaction. So, you know, I'm perfectly open to Alyssa determining how do we create that opportunity for online interaction when we're in a council meeting? She's going to have the expertise. She's going to know the dollar amount that we'd be able to work within. And so really, you know, it's, I'm not an expert in this, but if there was an opportunity for people to engage with us where they did not have to go down to council chambers, I think we would get much more community response and engagement. And it's nice to know who's out there. You know, I use this. I typically check the participant list a lot when I'm looking, you know, when we're in a meeting, in a Zoom meeting, to see who's sitting out there and what their name is. And, you know, the only time you don't really know is when there's a phone number there or they use their nickname. So it's nice to have that kind of engagement of, you know, who's out there and participating with us? So, again, I feel like Alyssa's going to have more of an idea of what we could do and what kind of realm of the cost would be. And obviously, we are on a tight, tight budget. So that is going to be a factor in this discussion.
Thanks, Paula. Charlie? Charlie Willman.
Eric. Yeah, I know. I had to unmute because you had muted me again. So I would like a lounge chair with, you know, a tray where I can sit and eat and, you know, watch TV during the meetings. But in a less facetious sense, I agree with what both Shelley and Paula have said about we want to make sure that we can engage the public. But I guess I'm curious from either Deborah or Alyssa, you know, if you guys could tell us, what sort of things are you thinking about? What would be potential things we could do to make this better? Is it changing the computers? As Shelley talked about, maybe if we get the big screens, we don't need those monitors right in front of us which often block our view of what's going on, people right in front of us. So it's not too bad. So what are the options that might be?
Charlie, if you don't mind, I would rather just kind of go through all of what council, maybe the wish list of what council would like to do before hearing back from staff. So we don't, if that's okay.
And I don't think, we didn't come prepared with answers, Charlie. We came prepared just to listen so Alyssa could have time to then bring back answers.
No, I'm not looking for, you know, answers. I'm just wondering if, I assume that there's been some thought about it and not holding you guys to that. But in, you know, my, just, I don't know what's available. How do we do this? What do we need to do? Do we need to change the entire structure where the council meeting room is set up? Those are the things, I guess, I'm curious about. That's all I have.
Okay. Tony?
Thank you, Jonathan. I just agree with Paula and Shelley. Anything that, you know, the world is changing. We may have a vaccine, we may not. But anything in the future that gives people more access, you know, it's tough to come home at 5:30, 5 o'clock. You're going to rush over to council chambers. I've seen that happen where people are like, oh, I got to get there. But if it would be easier for them to appear, and like Paula says, you can, I do check that too, who's here. I only see Christian all the time, but that's about it. But I think that's all a good idea within the limits of the technology. So that would be my direction. Thank you.
Thanks, Ingrid.
As far as a little feedback, I would like to know the different venues. More importantly, I'd like to know if we have any data about what demographics use it often. So if we can find that there's, you know, getting a younger audience because they are more inclined to use one specific venue over another, or maybe we can mix a few, just making sure that the diversity in the audience is maxed out as much as possible.
Thanks, Ingrid.
Yeah.
Before I go back for secondary comments, Steve, do you have any comments?
Yeah, but I'm completely on the other page. You know, I think if council goes back into the chambers, that people that want to comment should have to also make the effort to show up at the chambers. I don't want to be the only person sitting there and I'm having comments from people in New Jersey because they have an issue with, you know, just some idea. They've never even been to Glenwood, but it's just too easy for them to just log on and talk about, you know, what issues we have here. I don't have any interest in doing that. I think if somebody is, wants to engage with the city and council and the agenda, then they're going to have to make the same effort that we do as council. Otherwise, let's just not ever go back and we'll just keep it online for everybody forever. No reason for us to sit together either. That's the technology. So I'm bucking technology. I like the chambers the way it is. I like for people that are interested to stand up in front of us. I want to see their body language. I want to know where they're from and what their interest is.
Thanks, Steve. I'll give my two cents in there before we go back to Shelley. I agree with Steve. I hate doing that, too. It pains me. I'm kidding, Steve. Enjoy your Bravo. You know, I just look at some of the contentious conversations we've had. I look at the Riparian issue, which was very contentious. And I honestly, I kind of resent people, quite honestly, calling in from San Antonio and from other places in Texas and Lakewood, opining on what we should do in our community. I think that we, people from other parts of the state and other parts of the country, if they want to opine, do have that option. They can send us emails. They can call us. All of our numbers are published. And if they want to engage us personally or they want to engage this council, they can send us an email. We often, I read all the emails that come through, and I often respond to those emails. I know a lot of us do in our council comments when it comes back for us. But, you know, whether we're talking about a development, vaping was one of those conversations where we were getting, is a well-organized national lobby that was getting emails constantly. And I can't imagine a coordinated effort, you know, a Gary Vick-type coordinated effort on it. And I'm saying that with all due respect, not due respect, I mean, with actual respect to Gary Vick and how well he organized for that Riparian thing. I want to give him a lot of credit for that organization. But we get that on a national-wide scale. We're going to be here for hours and hours from people from Georgia and Texas and Florida and everywhere else calling in. So I think a couple of things. I do want to use technology to enable people to participate. But I think that, you know, and I looked for maybe a question for City Attorney. You know, I do remember one of the things, I don't know if it's vaping or one of the things where it's, oh, masks. That's it. Everybody got really upset with us and from out, throughout the state. And I remember somebody called in. They used some stupid nickname. And I asked, you know, please state your name and address. And they're like, I'm somewhere in Garfield County. Well, that doesn't help me. And I think that's a waste of our time. So if Paul can, if you can opine, I would be receptive to that if the following things, if we could ensure that anybody who wants to comment before us had video access so that we could see a little bit of that language and feedback that Counselor Davis speaks to. And two, that we could understand and know and verify that they are citizens and actually have standing. And not legal standing, but at least standing enough for us to determine how much. So go ahead, Carl.
Yeah, I mean, you know, public comment is a tradition, not a requirement. You know, I mean, in terms of, you can change your code. It's not, you know, it's, other than a public hearing and public reading of an ordinance, there's no other requirement that you take public comment, whether at the beginning of a meeting or during the meeting. Certainly, traditionally, we've always done that. Um, you know, I think that the means by which people can provide comments is certainly you can set what that is. If it's going to be electronic, you know, that it needs to be on video or they can come down, unless there is some accommodation that they need to reach out and make. And we do that through the clerk's office if people need to, and that's on the website. What I would say is that I think that, you know, it's very hard, as you know, if somebody stands up in council chambers and says, I'm from Silt, you probably aren't going to tell them to go sit down. And you can imagine how that would go over if you were live and in person. It's certainly easier to do, you know, to turn off their video or cut them off if we're doing a Zoom meeting. What I have found, and, you know, there has been a lot of concern. And a great example is if you look at what's going on, I can't remember, is it in Georgia, I guess, where the elections official was pointing out that one of his, you know, entry-level employees was getting death threats and people were driving by their house. A lot of places have gone now to simply saying, please let us know if you are inside the city limits or outside the city limits. And don't ask for a home address because unfortunately, we've gotten into a world where, you know, people are pretty wound up and pretty aggressive. And so I guess that would be my suggestion is, and then you, as council, can take their testimony for what you see its value is. If it is from somebody in Garfield County commenting on, you know, the Riparian condition of the river or the Roaring Fork Conservancy project that we might be participating in, that seems like that has a lot of value. If they're commenting on some other policy of the city, maybe it doesn't. But I don't, I don't know that it's good for you to say, we're not going to listen to those comments. You are smart enough to give those comments the weight that you think they should have.
But I guess my question is, I'm not opposed to taking public comment in any form. But Carl, if somebody is, and again, I'm referring back to mask or vaping or things that had nationwide. Can I just say, if you live in 81601, you are, you know, you come up first and you give comments. If you live in Garfield County, you're next. We're not going to take comment from anybody who doesn't at least live in Garfield County. Can we do that? Can we discriminate in that way?
You can define it any way you want to. I can tell you'll get beat up for it, frankly. And there again, it's easier to do that electronically like we are right now than if somebody stands up in front of you at the podium and says, I drove up from Denver to comment on this subject. Are you going to tell them to sit down?
No, but it's a lot easier. It's a lot, the bar, I think, with Dave, Steve Davis was talking about, the bar of somebody actually coming from Silt and taking time out to come and comment on something, that's fine. I don't mind hearing about that. But it's pretty easy for some fanatic in Georgia to log on and opine for three minutes about what we should do in Glenwood Springs.
So, you know, you can define whether or not you'll take electronic testimony and from where. And, okay, you can do that. I just think that you need to come up with a uniform policy that can be applied, whether you, you know, that's clear and understandable to people.
Okay. Thank you for answering those questions. That helps me. I would also say real quick, before we go back through, I agree with Shelley. I do like Carbondale, how they have two screens. I don't like how our dais is high and kind of makes us feel like on top of the people. Carl, I like that in a world where we had no money issues, a more rounded dice, we could see each other better. But I think just at least taking that lip off of the dais and having our little laptops there instead of big monitors and, you know, even that little space in front, you know, just breaking down some barriers, I think, to the public in person from a physical aspect as well as having those screens. And that, I think, would be something I would offer up.
I'm sorry.
Well, we have Shelley.
And then I tried to raise my hand, Jonathan. I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have everybody else that wants to talk again. I don't want to get us too far behind. And I took up some time. We have 10 minutes. So if everybody could throw in like one last comment. This will come back before us, for sure.
Well, let Tony go ahead of me because I've already.
So.
But I did too. But just real quick, Jonathan, I really, I know that a former councilman brought up that idea of lowering the dais or something. But I love your idea with the lip away. I like being high because, as Carl knows, I've always fantasized about being a judge, but it'll never happen. I'm kidding. But I think that you have more, I like the rounded idea a little bit. But like you were in the city council chambers, Jonathan and Aspen, and that seemed a little more cozier and everyone's at the same level. And Carbondale is like that, too, where they're sort of in horseshoe. So that's a great idea. Thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead, Shelley.
Yep. The other thing, if, when I heard wishlist, I was like, woo, wishlist. The other thing I've heard, actually from people presenting, you know, right now, we have the podium. People have to stand up and present. And most places where I've been, they have a table where two or three people can sit down. It's like that at Carbondale or the county. It's much more comfortable for, I think, someone who's sitting and presenting to council. They can sit down, plug into technology and then, and be comfortable while they present. So I think that would be an upgrade for us also. But, yeah, and everything, I think there's a lot of good comment here. But I do think this is an opportunity for us to take a leap forward and get, take advantage of modern technology to really increase our outreach. And I'm all for trying to control that outreach and keep it local as much as we can. But I would, I would like to see us move forward and get as much public participation as we can locally.
All right. Charlie? You're muted, Charlie. There you go.
Sorry, finally, thank you. Yeah, I disagree with you, Mr. Mayor, respectfully, that we shouldn't let people comment, no matter where they're from. It has not been a problem. If it would become a problem, then we'd have to think about it. But if somebody from Denver wants to call in and say, we think, I think you guys should not have a mass face covering ordinance and do that. Let them talk. They got three minutes. And, you know, if we find it's really causing us to go along the meetings, that'd be fine. But I have to say, I can't think of any time where we're talking about the comments before council at the beginning of the meeting where that's lasted, other than our comments or our input, has lasted more than 10 or 15 minutes. And I don't think that's inappropriate to allow the public to have that kind of input to the public body. So I think that we should allow that. And electronic communications allows it better, that's fine. And I agree with Carl. I hadn't even thought about it. But I think we should change it and say, if you live in the city or outside the city, just leave it at that. Because I agree, there are more and more safety issues for people who aren't otherwise well-adjusted. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Deborah, jump in here. You had your hand up.
I just wanted, as Alyssa is tracking this, I know you guys do want us to bring back like an estimate for simultaneous translation. And I think I've been working on that slowly but surely. I am thinking that is something that we should add in our list of wants for this.
I didn't really see that as part of this conversation. I saw that as something completely different. But if that's part of our meeting and council meetings and that gets wrapped into it and can move forward. But to me, that feels.
Someone else reminds me not to forget about it.
Don't forget about it.
Yes.
Paula, go ahead.
One other thing, sorry. One other thing real quick, I can't, I think we need to be careful. There's been suits with people with disabilities suing because they'll have equal access. So I think we ought to be careful. Obviously, Carl would look at that issue. But if we have somebody who needs sidelinkage and stuff like that, I think that's, you know, I think that's something we need to keep in mind when we expand our reach by technology. Thanks.
Thanks, Charlie. Paula and then Ingrid.
First of all, my, everybody's cutting in and out. Is that my service or is that, is anybody else having that problem?
I'm not having that problem.
Okay. So, sorry. Just so I know, and if you lose me later, we know. So mine is similar to just the last point that Charlie made. I think the reason that I do like this option is because there are people who are physically disabled. There are people who can't make it to a meeting. They might be traveling, but then the issue is important to them. And I just think it gives access to our public. It broadens our, the ability for our public to speak to us. And I understand what you're saying, Jonathan and Steve, about, you know, there are going to be outliers. But in the long run, we're making a move towards a different world anyways. So having access through our internet's really important. And, you know, I just don't want to be the one to say, you know, you have to be able to physically come to this. And on that other note, you know, we're doing everything in town we can that people can walk places, that we're building buildings so that they don't have to travel a lot. And offering this kind of opportunity kind of reinforces that idea of you can participate in city government and policy issues and that type of thing without having to get in your car and drive somewhere to do it. So that's another reason that I kind of really appreciate this opportunity. And on a side note, the county commissioners aren't taking comments on some things nowadays. So I like the idea that we do take comments. I think it's really important to engage with our public and hear what they're saying.
There you go. Thanks, Paula. I appreciate that. Go ahead, Ingrid.
So I actually am going to echo a handful of those, but then I won't by just saying I agree with Paula and Charlie. And that I think that the inclusivity, I think that's the word, is where we want it to be. We want to make sure that people are able to engage in city government. And I think that we're in a new generation coming in. The more opportunities they have to use platforms that they're comfortable with, the more likely that their voice will be heard. On that same note, we have applicants who have architects who are Denver, Houston, wherever they are. I think having a venue that plays well with our meetings makes it so those integral players who do explain the process or what the, you know, the plan is, they don't have to travel, which is, you know, from an environmental perspective and just a time and energy perspective. I think that's great. One last comment, and I don't know if Alyssa, if this is doable and/or if it's even possible for what we need as far as like hearing the voice, hearing the comments. But if it was possible ahead of time for people to pre-record video and, you know, within a three-minute timeframe and give their comments, similar to a written letter that we would get on an application, if we could have those videos and then we could preview them, it might make our meeting be super efficient as well. Just thoughts?
Yeah, and Ingrid, just to respond, I think I always feel like more comment and more inclusivity is better. Just as a rule. And I think a lot of this, what we're talking about is not giving Alyssa, you know, like, that's all policy stuff. Who do we take comment, when do we take comment from? And I think that I am very interested in what our citizens I am very interested in what our citizens and people in eight one six oh one and in Garfield County and interested party architects that would be doing a presentation. People farther down the river who are interested in our riparian zone or our watershed. Those are all great. I think we just have that conversation depending on the topic of. Who are interested parties and who are our citizens that are eligible to comment? And I think I think having that conversation is is. Not something that I think we're trying to give Alyssa direction. I think that's something a policy internal that we talk about. So I think. If anybody has one, a couple of last things of physical physicality or other things you need information from Alyssa, that would be great. The one thing I will say real quick on my wishlist is during the vaping conversation, that got pretty tense. And I was looking around where the exits were and there's not an exit that's pretty darn handy for us on council. There's not. A desk that has any ability, if I want to duck behind it, that has any bulletproofness. At all. And I know, I know this sounds crazy, but you know, the city or the school district spent $15 million because of active shooter concerns with securing their entrances. And for us not to think about that or for me to sound like a a snowflake because somebody could come in and. I I I felt great having Terry Wilson there sitting in the back, but at the same time, somebody comes in and blows right past him. I do want to have, I don't want, maybe not metal detectors, but I want security and. Egress and the ability to survive something like that to be on the list that we address. Go ahead, Deborah.
I guess we had talked about, you know. Different options we could, you know, like a bulletproof. Dias at one point. So I was just trying to say, no, that's not a crazy thing to think about. We've already thought about it.
Okay. Alyssa, what what other qualifications do you need from us?
I got a lot of good information and a lot of it is very aligned with what I was already kind of thinking before this got brought up. So just for some background for you guys. This is something that we've been looking at doing for several years and we always end up kind of losing the funding because it's not. Immediately broken. And so. Like Deborah said, due to trying to get this working on channel 10. I did end up going in the room, cutting cables, resplicing things, making it possible. So it is on channel 10 and but going back, I can undo everything that I did. I just need enough notice to undo everything that I did, right? But that room has always been like the broadcast booth specifically and really council chambers in general is. A bit pieced together and we kind of refer to it as like Radio Shack special. Because as things get old, we replace it with what can work, right? And we did just have the projector fail in there and we. Wanted to fix it, but I don't want to spend a lot of money on it because we need a new one anyway. So basically what I'm hearing is we want TVs in front of you. Up probably in the ceilings, like up towards the ceiling so that. You can see it from your side and then the audience can see it from their side. What I'd like to know is does that negate the need for the projector?
I I would say yes, and I would say even that little document projector where people slide stuff over. That's really antiquated too. I think that presenter should be able to upload documents so that everything is in front of us and we're not. You know, staring around trying to look over our shoulder. I don't think we should have a projector of presenters or anything. There should be no hard copies of something somebody has to slide in front of a projector to then project on that screen. It should all be electronic.
And. We have in the past talked about taking away those computers and those monitors. We did just replace those computers. And so now instead of a big tower with a lot of cables. It's actually a box that's about this big that's actually attached to the wall underneath the desk. Like on the side of the of the dais there for each one of you. But we can certainly repurpose those, redistribute them in the city. And basically just set it up so that what you bring in is your city issued Surface Pro. Set it there in front of you where it's going to be a little bit lower so that people can see you a little bit better. That was something we had talked about in the past, but I would love to get feedback on that as well.
Can I, Alyssa, I'm a Mac person. Can I use my personal MacBook?
I don't see why not.
But I, I mean, do we have to use the city issued?
No, I can certainly set it up so that it has, like we have some adapters and things so that you have some options. Like what is sitting there right now is a kind of an older iPad, iPad plug that you could potentially use to look at.
Right.
But we can certainly set it up, like if you wanted to have an external monitor, but otherwise, like if you're just bringing it in and setting it on the desk, I, it doesn't make any difference to me at all what you bring.
Just keep in, keep in mind, we need power.
Yeah.
Problem is we don't have power up there, so.
Potentially set a power strip in that space where the monitor sits now, so you can just reach it very easily. That would be very easy. One concern that I have is if somebody forgets their computer or their tablet. I don't know how you want to deal with that. Like I can potentially store a couple of spares there or something. But that's like, that was one thing that came to mind of could be a potential problem if we do get rid of those computers entirely. Another problem with that is that we don't city issue. Tablets or anything to like planning and zoning. So if they were to come in and want to use those computers, they wouldn't have anything there. That was another thing that we had thought of.
Right. And I I'd like to hear from others on how they, on whether or not they would prefer to keep a computer there.
And yeah, if we have the TVs up in front of you where it's easier to see, it may not be as big of a problem.
Anybody else? Yeah, I mean, I think everything is on the cloud now. Let's. Let's, let's, let's keep it there.
What I'm hearing is TVs instead of a projector, potentially getting the monitors off of the desk as long as that works kind of for everybody else who uses the space. One of the challenges that we have to doing virtual meetings in that space is the audio. So it's not difficult to get you guys onto the screen as like a Zoom user, right? It says City of Glenwood Springs and it's a picture, it's the video of the room, just like the YouTube is. The problem comes from getting the the audio back into the room. So having the speaker be able to ask, like the public speaker be able to ask you a question. Or make public comment, have you be able to hear it and have it not cause a lot of feedback and echoing? But that I'm sure is a problem that we can solve. It's like, but that's why I have been hesitant to go back to partially hybrid meetings. Is right at the moment that will be a problematic situation because it does cause a lot of echoing.
All right, guys, we're running behind and I don't want to kick everything else down the road. So if Ingrid and Steve had one last comment, that would be helpful. Otherwise, we can, I'm sure. Email Alyssa those comments. Go, go quick, Ingrid and Steve.
Mine is just that planning and zoning, and I think maybe even others use that if we could get their feedback as well, and that would be fantastic, just since we're a big team. So thank you.
Great comment. Steve?
You know, I was just gonna say, you don't like the projector, but you know, you're talking about making it more inclusive for people. A lot of people don't have the technology when they walk in there. They've got a piece of paper. They want to show us something. How do they do that? So I think it's important to maintain something like that.
Follow up on that, Steve, because the the chambers are also used for land use applications. There are times both when an applicant may have something that they want to project up, whether it's a sample board or something like that. As well as members of the public that want to show a picture or something, you know, a diagram schematically. It, from my standpoint and having land use practice, that was one of the best rooms to present in because I had the most flexibility. So I, from that standpoint, I do appreciate the the, you know, links to the TV. It would be linked to the TVs now, not the projector, but just that ability. To to be able to do that is is actually a nice thing to have.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. If we have anything else that comes up or other ideas, just send them to Alyssa. We'll hopefully get another work session in a couple of months about what that might look like. Okay. All right. Next, H Street Crossing Development. Jen.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I actually don't have a presentation. I think that this time was intended for. For you to to ask questions about where we are with the process. Essentially, we. The last direction I think we had was related to the park planning and it happened right before the. The, you know, city hall shut down and we we went into all remote and. So we haven't kind of moved anything forward, but you did ask earlier this fall that we reach back out to the developers and see if they are still interested. And so you have letters from the developer teams in your packet and. Kind of as much information as I could provide from all of the times that we've given you information related to the developer teams proposals. And and with that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
And I will just add, I think we were also kind of looking for. What you guys wanted to do going forward with this, like any, I know you can't give us direction, but I think we'd like to hear from you about what you think the process kind of should look like.
Paula and then Tony.
It was great to get this packet, Jennifer, and and kind of revisit this. It's been a long time since the presentation. So. I did come up with a half a dozen questions, so I hope you'll be patient with me. How long is the Opportunity Zone benefits available?
The Opportunity Zone, I mean, I think that the last. The the kind of the, the, the full piece of that has expired. And it was part of the reason or is expiring. I think that was the reason that the the folks who are doing the Bill Ripley project were looking for entitlements. So that they could kind of get it in the queue for the kind of the full amount of time for the Opportunity Zone. Now, whether or not there's an extension or, you know, a, you know, a second iteration of that, that remains to be seen.
Okay, so those, that's good because that was brought up a lot. How have we finished the Vogel R part, transfer legalized, all the stuff we needed to do with. That or is that still in process?
It's still in process. And so what I think actually was. The conversation where this started in October was related to to that. And so we now have this IGA, an updated IGA for the land swap. Terry Parch and I have been working to make sure that we get everything that we need to submit to CPW ready. So it's in collaboration with the the school district and we had to kind of get, we we've been making sure that everything is right. We're very close. We've just been, yesterday, I think it was, we went through kind of the whole document and just made sure that all of the. The figures were named the right thing and we're going to get a meeting hopefully with them soon and then submit that. So we we haven't done the exchange part. We're, we're, we're working through that and then hopefully we'll get an answer back from them, although I understand because of coronavirus that they have a little bit of a backlog.
Okay. And some of these proposals mentioned the gap we have for housing in particular, offering opportunities for rent. For housing, for affordable housing and that gap has been changed. So do you know, or would you consider that the developers will. Address that, that we now have six, one, two, three, four, five, five rental developments that have opened up or are going to be opened up. As far as that gap goes, when they look at the affordable housing component of. Including in this development for H Street.
It's, it's something that I think moving forward, we would want to look at. Because I think you're right, there have been, you know, hundreds of units that have come online or are in process or close to coming online. But I, it's not a question that I've circled back with them about. So it's something that I think it's, if if you're looking for a presentation, we could certainly ask how that plays into their thinking about the project now.
Okay, it just is in my mind on how fast we move forward based on what they're offering. And so. But he mentioned that they could work with us if the city could pay the development and pre-development costs. Is that feasible with our current budget and what kind of cost is that?
I don't think that we know exactly what those pre-development costs would be. And Carl, he unmuted himself, so he he can help me out here, but. I mean, I think that the idea from the developer teams, I think, has been that if you were to select a developer team, that then. You would be able to negotiate some of those things. And I think it's. What the approach is and how many public meetings there are and exactly what the, you know. The pieces are that are related to the the soils analysis or, you know. There, there are lots of different moving pieces to what those pre-development costs can be. So it's, it's a difficult question to answer.
I, that's what I was going to say is that there are a number of things that go into it and it's also a question of risk allocation, right? If you're, if you're viewing pre-development costs as up to and including the point of entitlement. You have watched enough applicants come through at this point to know how risky that proposition is and how expensive that can be. And so that's, that's a little bit of this too, right? Is that there are no. There's no guarantees just because they're working with with the city as an owner that that ultimately the project that comes out of that process will get approved. And so. You know, there's hard costs and and soft costs both associated with that risk. And on a project of this size. You know, it, it. You likely would be looking at for the hold about, you know, I mean, if you're kind of sort of master planning and getting through a process. You know, you're a half million to to a million dollars in pre-development costs to get to entitlement without question.
Okay, and and that's something we would have to look at at the 2021 budget if we say, if we as a council say, yeah, we need to move for.
Yeah, and and I think that that goes into the negotiation that Jen was talking about is that that might be the aggregate price of it, but there it's, you know, where do you allocate those risks? And which pieces do you want to take on as a city? Because things like a soils analysis will have, you know, potentially beneficial to the city in the long term. So maybe you want to pay for that one versus some other piece of the puzzle. And so you just, you kind of negotiate through those with the developer.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Throw in that none of this is budgeted in the 2021 budget.
Right, that's what I was thinking. And what about budgeting staff? Do we have staff to work on this in 2021? Or is it just preliminary stuff we could do if we move forward on this?
I would, you know, the staff that would be working on it, you're looking at. I mean, it would be, you know, Carl, Jen, me helping them, Steve helping them, but no, we've nobody. I don't think anybody has a lot of spare time right now.
Okay.
And they'd be bumping other priorities, but.
Yeah. The pieces, this initial phase with the developers really one where you want your kind of your senior management team to engage, right? Like that's who you want to have engaged with that process.
Okay.
And Paula, we have limited time and a lot of other hands up.
I I did my half a dozen questions.
Okay, I did. I wasn't counting. So if you had three more, I was going to ask to come back to them at the end. Tony, go ahead.
I don't have any questions because I'm, it's not a surprise. I'm vehemently opposed to this project. Behind the mayor and Mr. Davis is a mountain, behind Ms. Step and myself and Ms. Calp is a mountain. There's a mountain, I don't know where Ingrid lives, but there's a mountain on the other side of town too, facing city hall. This is a small little valley until we commit to spending at least two and a half million dollars a year repairing our infrastructure. To inject more housing and more, more traffic into the middle of downtown is a very, very bad idea. And I think if we attempt it, I know there will be a referendum and the people of this community will walk at it. There was too much traffic. That was the problem with Grand Avenue and there was no other place to put the traffic. It's a narrow little place. We don't have the infrastructure for it. We clearly don't have the staff for it. This project should be placed on hold indefinitely until we do. So. I really don't have any questions other than why are we wasting that 30 minutes talking about this? But I know people have questions, so I'm done. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Charlie.
Yeah, I guess my my sense of this is is not something, I think Carl's already pointed out, Jen did, it's not going to happen tomorrow, the next day, but. I think one of our jobs as city leaders, and I agree with the Tonys, is we need to make sure we can afford it. We don't want to take away from any other infrastructure needs of the city to to do this. But. Economic revitalization or revitalization or whatever term you'd want to use for the downtown area. It's going to be critical to our long-term ability to meet those other needs because we're driven by sales tax dollars. And that means we need people, that we need feet in the ground, we need. People buying things in the community. And as I see this project as something that can bring in. A lot younger generation than I am, but you know. a lot other generation than I am, but you know, the, we need that that vital profession, young professional housing so that we can get those people with our new broadband in particular here. And they would help be an economic generator to the community. My my view would be is we should explore with limited time and Carl and Deborah and Jen can give me some feedback what that means, but some limited time, we should explore what it would take to get us to a place we can see, is there a development agreement or agreement we can reach with the developers? We rephrase that. It makes economic sense for the city, both this in 2021, when there's not a lot of money, a lot of staff died. But in the long run, can we do it? And there's a way to make it so that when hopefully in April or May, when we come out of this crisis and we're able to walk around the streets again without face coverings and all the other things to go with that, we're we're ready and charged to move forward and to continue to make the progressive place that we all like living. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Shelley, go ahead.
I'd have to say I kind of agree with what Charlie's saying, but I'm not sure about the timeline and I don't know how many conversations people have had out in the community, but my feeling is that after the year we've just had, people are kind of weary and exhausted. We're still going to have COVID going on into probably at least the middle of next year. So my sense would be to push this off until that time. At the same time, I'm I'm torn because I would love to see us get the River Park area developed in the Confluence and possibly get some planning going for housing downtown. But I also feel like I was really excited about the URA in West Glenwood and the mall. And I feel like that's an area of town that is sitting there somewhat blighted, it needs attention. We've put so much energy into downtown. West Glenwood could really use a grocery store and other improvements in that area. And I'm weighing that thinking, would it be, would it be, make more sense to put more of our energies trying to move that forward and get that mall redeveloped before we start a whole new development in downtown? So I have to say I'm kind of struggling with this one and I'm interested to see where everybody lands.
And I think the mall conversation is a good one to have for sure, Shelley. I think, you know, the the difference is we own this, by and large, own 90% of what we're talking about. We don't actually have ownership, although we do have some modicum of control because of the URA. But I would love to bring that back as a conversation to see where we're at. We just haven't had an update. We haven't had a URA meeting in, or URA. Yeah, yeah. In quite a while. So I think an update with that in the next month or two would be desirable. Ingrid.
Yeah, Tony's right. I haven't really picked a mountain yet. And it's probably because I haven't been in a position to really analyze it. I've, you know, looked into it a little bit. It's always been hinted at, it's been talked about for a long time. I think more than anything, because time isn't of the essence, it would be great to use some tools that we have available to see what what the the population of Glenwood feels like. Where are they with it? Were they with growth? Where are they with the type of housing that goes in? Since we do own this land and eventually we will do something with it, let's have the voice of the community tell us which direction, you know, the general consensus feels like we need to go. And if it is more aligned with what Tony's saying, that infrastructure is more important than, you know, building tall buildings and utilizing that space. And where people just want to park, maybe, you know, that's a direction or it's another direction, but ultimately time isn't of the essence. We don't have to make a decision tomorrow. And I think that getting more feedback is what would benefit everyone.
Thanks, Ingrid.
One more thing too, and that is that I didn't just come up with the idea of getting some feedback. Ultimately, when we talked about, we had a joint session with tourism or, I'm not not tourism, I think it was housing, planning and zoning and council. It came up then too, you know, put out some polls similar to short term rental and see what people, people want to see, what they need and what the general vibe is of town.
Yeah, and 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 I would agree with that. I think, you know, it's it's, there is not a huge, you know, we're not running at this. I do think though that you know, we have had a ton of community input. You know, 12 years ago, we spent $30 million to move a sewage treatment plant to free up this area for that. Now, that was a vision that five councils ago had. That may not be our vision. Our vision might be to keep it as a gravel parking lot for the foreseeable future. But I I think it is, you know, we have seen numerous proposals and there's been charrettes and public input over the last decade plus. So I think we, the the community's had a lot of opportunity to put input in to get us to the point where, you know, what really what we have is we have three people, three companies that have submitted master development proposals, which is what we asked of them. And they put a lot of time and energy and I think, you know, what the guidance we need to give staff is, do we want to just shelf this? Maybe till the next council? Or at some point, I'm not in a hurry. I I personally think, yeah, COVID, COVID is scary. You know, we had five more deaths reported from the last 48 hours in Garfield County. And I'm not running at this, but I I think, you know, come, come the spring, when we have a better idea of the vaccination uptick and where we're at as a community and where we're at with, you know, even with staff and South Midland and potentially a South Bridge, I think we need to take stock in all of that, but I think we're at a point now in the next six months where we at least can tell these people that have put all this effort in. You know what? You're just going to have to sit on your hands until you get a significantly different council or we're going to select one person to start negotiating with and and start discussions with to take it to that next phase. And that next phase is developing pictures and ideas and plans and getting community support for whatever the community wants to see here, because it's not about what I want to see or what Tony wants to see or doesn't want to see. It's about what the community wants to see. But the way we get to that is we've been having those discussions and conversations for a decade plus. And the next phase is to work with somebody who can flush it out a little bit more than that, who's who's going to be invested in it. So that's I I guess my direction would be, if I had to give direction, would be that we get something in the spring back before us, maybe have another presentation. It seems like all of the people who've presented are still interested. I hope they're still interested in March or April. And if that's the case, then I think at that point we probably have a better idea of what council will look like in the next couple of years. And, you know, we need to make that decision at that time. Go ahead, Paula.
I understand what you're saying, Jonathan, about we've had a lot of public input. I just feel like we're in a different world right now. You know, just what we're dealing with with a budget, with the city of Glenwood Springs, what everybody in town is dealing with, with their individual budgets, what's what's a priority now is completely different than the what a good state we were in two years ago, five years ago, 10 years ago, things were going up and and we're just in a different place and people's priorities have shifted. So I'm not saying we do a $30 million kind of public survey, but I do agree with Ingrid that getting some community feedback right now would not be a bad idea on what are the priorities to the to the citizens right now. I'm not, and I'm also taking into account what Shelley said. I do think we have invested a lot into the downtown core and it's really important to us, as Charlie has said, because of its tax base, but we have a lot of space here in Glenwood that we need to work on to get filled back up again. West Glenwood, South Glenwood, Safeway, there's so many different projects right now that we could be, you know, investing in on developing, that it would be great to see that kind of movement happening in rebuilding those assets. So I see that, you know, waiting six months is not going to hurt us and getting some public input would be valuable.
Thanks, Ingrid. And then Shelley will have last, last word, and then we'll hear from staff if they've gotten, and then actually Steve. And we got to run through them quick, though. Go ahead, Ingrid.
I'm just going to reiterate just no sense urgency, even with the people who've given us proposals. I mean, ultimately, there will be other companies if we need to contact them and or people will be grateful for the business. And, you know, this is a big project. So I think that that on our end, we should just make sure that the timing works for us and not necessarily that we're working at the discretion of these companies that have submitted proposals. They'll be grateful for the work.
Thanks, Shelley.
I just wanted to chime in that I definitely, I do like Ingrid's idea of doing a survey of the community. And I think it's a good time after the year everybody's had is to sit back and say, yeah, here, you know, we have a reduced budget this year. How do we want to prioritize? Do we want to just, as Charlie said, just focus on basic infrastructure and streets for the next year? And again, just, just kind of a general question to the community. Where are the priorities right now, you know, for for this upcoming year? We we kind of all have visions. That's why we're we're doing what we're doing. You know, we have visions for the community for five, 10 years out, but we're in a different spot right now. We're coming out of this time and I think it's a great time to gauge the community and see where people are at.
Thanks. Steve Davis.
I'll just keep it short, but you know, I, Paula said, we're in a completely different place now than we were two years ago. That's true. Unmistakably, 2020 is a different place. 2022 will be quite a different place again. You know, this project has been part of the vision of this community for a dozen years. We have spent tens of millions of dollars to make that land available. Carl worked long and hard to get the Y removed and and so that we own that property as well. I think that people in the community do want to be in the community, not in the suburbs. You know, we're trying to reduce traffic, which means you live and work in the same place and you don't have to get in your car to get somewhere. I don't believe that, you know, we should go out and start digging in that ground. But I think we should continue to have a vision for the future and continue to plan for the future. Ultimately, we will have a vote, we will have public input. It'll be the decision of this community as to what we do there. However, if we have no plan in place to submit to the community, you're not going to have any kind of of opinion from the community that makes any that has any grounds at all. You have to get to, you have to develop a plan, something that you can show the community, something we've done now several times actually on the Confluence. If you just went out down the street right now and just started asking people, what do you think we should do without showing them any vision at all? There's no telling what kind of answer you would get and there's no telling how that they would even that they would even understand the answer they're giving. So it would certainly be my hope that we don't shelve this thing for the future, but we continue to plan for the future. I certainly don't want to occupy staff time to a great extent at this point in time. And I don't want this to ever be a huge financial burden on the city. It should be a financial burden to a developer down there if we could put a plan together. But like Charlie said, you know, we're either going to stagnate down here. If we're going to build the infrastructure that Tony would like to see happen, we're going to have to find other avenues of of income. And this is exactly what that does. By developing that, you bring more income to the city of Glenwood. Businesses prosper as a result of that planning.
Debbie, had your hand up?
And I don't know if it's something we need to get in today. I think I want you guys to think about, like, if we go the community survey routes, you know, what that looks like. Is it, I would try to push you towards like a professionally run community survey, which I know can be more expensive than people want to pay, but they'll be much better than anything we can throw together. But we don't, we should not talk about that now. I just wanted to plant that seed.
I think not to, the solution to everything is not, we'll have another work session, but I I do think we, if we want to, you know, Jen has been banging the drum of updating our comprehensive plan. We we are due. It was done in 2011. It's it's time. It's every 10 years. So so now's the time to contemplate that. Even if it doesn't happen until 2022, I think that we really need to, sorry, a kid just came in who's supposed to be at swimming lessons right now. I have no idea why that is. But I think that, you know, if we do a survey, City of Aspen does a community wide survey every couple of years and it is, you know, it's very comprehensive. And when Paula and Shelley have been talking about West Glenwood and what that looks like, you know, community wide surveys more than just, do you want a binary choice of, do you want development at Eight Street Crossing or not? It's, you know, where do you want our priorities? Where should development happen? Should development happen or not? And so I I think having a community wide survey is part of a discussion about a comprehensive plan is important. But I think that this decision right now is just not baked in enough that I I think I can give staff direction personally to select someone or to bring back a recommendation or for us to move forward at this time. But I'm looking to hear some more opinions.
My my vote, if we're going to take a poll or I don't know if we want to kind of poll people, but I would say let's put this off and revisit it in the spring.
I would be good with that. Ingrid, last.
Yeah, so I do know that in in, and you guys can confirm this, but we do have money budgeted in 2021 for the comp plan revision, correct? Okay, so I think the timing of it could be just perfect where we could segue, especially before we do such an important guiding document as the comp plan and make these big decisions on on land owned by the city that we would have feedback. And so I I am a strong proponent of just pausing and getting some feedback, generally speaking, before we make some decisions.
All right. Do the staff feel like we have enough non-direction to at least not take action right now? All right. And one thing that would help, I think, when we do continue to have this conversation, whether it be in the context of a comp plan, a survey, community wide survey, is understanding the public process that has happened with the Confluence over the years, the meetings, the shreds, and I think there's a tendency, if you haven't been a part of it, either on P and Z or as a active community participant, that sometimes we think that it hasn't happened and it would be good for us to know what has happened, how much has happened, when it's happened, and if we need to have some, an update of that. So that that would be my additional feedback of just, you know, can you get back to us with where that information or that amount has happened?
Mr. Mayor, what are we going to tell these three potential developers that we'll get back to them in six months? We'll get back to them in a year? What 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 is the direction that you see us going in?
I will defer that for a couple of comments. I guess I would say let's have a conversation in the spring. But I think if we get back to them in a year, they're just, you know, and then in Tinker's point, like, that's fine, we're not on their schedule, but they have put in significant resources and they do deserve not to be kept on the hook for another year is my strong opinion. I mean, we owe that to them and to honor that commitment. We're never going to get other people to ever take an interest in Glenwood Springs or developing a West Glenwood Mall if we're viewed as a community that just punts things down the road and dribbles things out six months at a time and it takes years. So that that's something I'm sensitive about. So any any other thoughts on when we should readdress this or get back to people? I I think it's important to be able to make a decision, at least on this master developer architect. I mean, these are, people were asking to say, can you help us plan for what might eventually at some point go before the citizens for a vote? This has to go to a vote. So any idea on the timing or any thoughts on when that would be? Counselor Davis?
Well, I would certainly. I think that, you know,
I think that, you know, spring is a good time to readdress this. I think we ought to give this vaccine a chance to maybe knock the flames down a little bit hopefully and, and come April 1st. You know, I'd like to see us readdress this again. I think you can't keep these developers on the hook forever and you can't just let them go away. You cannot just continue to jerk people's chain and expect them to come back to the table because they, they won't. They'll have work, plenty of work, lots of work in other parts of the country with government agencies that are, have more vision, you know, and that are more committed to the project. So it's difficult to bring in a developer and talk, talk it up and then just let them walk away like that.
Well, we were, we were able, we were going to make this decision at the first meeting of April of 2020. You know, we were going to have an up or down vote, you know, just to remind folks about that. And then COVID hit. And I think with the COVID numbers, the, the uncertainty, at least I feel right now, is too great for me to make a decision. So I think we will know a whole lot more in March or April about what the world looks like. And I think at that point, we do deserve, we do owe to them. The only thing we owe to them is an up or down vote. I think that that is what we owe to them. And I think that that is something that if they'll hang out with us for another couple of months, that I would feel prepared to give them as we see how this goes. So if I could get a tacit head nod that, that we can reexamine that in the spring, it's kicking the can down the road, but not indefinitely. I think that would be helpful for direction.
This comment, I disagree waiting till April, but April's better than two years from now or something.
What are other people's thoughts?
I didn't hear Charlie yet. Can you say that again?
Sure. I said, I don't agree kicking it even to April. I think we should begin trying to see if we can flesh out something with a developer now, master developer now, without spending a lot of time or resources because we don't have those. But I don't want to just wait to April, then pick it up there and say, well, let's start talking because I think it's just, it's not appropriate. But I would rather have a kick to April than, than a kick to some indefinite time in the future.
Thanks. Paula? Yay, nay?
Yay. I'm comfortable with waiting till spring. Spring seems like a good time to revisit it. I do have to tell you that after we get done with this session and before we go to the next one, I'm going to get out and get back in because my connection's not very good.
Fair enough. Thanks for that. Ingrid?
My only thing is that I think April's great. By then we'll have three confirmed new council men and women. And I think it'll make sure that, you know, there's a three-year future with that group optimistically.
That makes sense. All right. Does that, is that good direction enough for you, Jen? Kicking the can a little bit, Charlie. All right. Let's roll right into the next one. Boards and commissions. Who's presenting on this? Am I presenting on this? Go ahead, Deborah.
Yes, I was going to say, I think this is council led. You guys asked for an opportunity to discuss what you wanted to do with boards and commissions. I believe it is focused on term limits.
Yeah. And so, you know, I think at least I'll, I'll jump out in front of this one. I, I think that it's, we started to have this conversation a while ago. We had Marie Stahl, Maristel, excuse me, Marie, Maristel. As actually an applicant who was, I think, applying for her sixth term on historical preservation, that kind of really brought it to attention, put a, put a name and face to it. And I, I gotta say that reappointing her was in violation of our code. Our code does not, you know, necessarily allow for that. So I'm glad we approved her. Maris is, is, is wonderful. Here's our preservation commission. You know, I like those folks. So not having it be about her or about that commission, I think is good. So we're past it. But now let's talk about it because now we have in code that you are only allowed two terms, potentially a third term if deemed vital, I think is, is the terminology. So I, I'm just looking for guidance here of whether we want to amend our code for unlimited terms and what that looks like. Or if we don't, how we're going to enforce that when someone we like is on a commission that we like and is asking us to, you basically go against the code that we have. So Charlie?
Yeah, thanks. I think of a position I said in the past is I tend to agree with you, Jonathan. We either get rid of the, the language that allows for discretion, either it's two years or there, or there's no limit. And then we make a decision on an appointment by basis if we want to continue to have these people on the boards or commissions. You know, I, I guess I'm still ambivalent on which of those ought to be, but I think this idea that we say, well, we can allow this person to stay is exactly what you say, Mr. Mayor, is whether somebody, you have to like that person more or feels they're more valuable. So they lobby the rest of us to keep that person on a board. And with unlimited terms, I guess that would still be there. So I just have to get rid of the language that leaves it discretionary. Either get no term limit or two terms or three terms. Maybe we say three terms to mid, 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 middle of the road kind of thing. So.
Yeah. And I guess, you know, I'll just read the language, just so we're clear. Limit to term of members unless it is deemed vital by city council, but an appointed member of a board or commission be retained in office. Each member shall be replaced after having served for six years on a board or commission. However, nothing in the subsections of be construed to prevent the appointment of a member to a new term where at the expiration of his or her current term, he, she will have served less than six years. So that's, that's the current language. Go ahead, Shelley.
I guess I, I would not be against maybe upping that to three terms and then making that a rule that we stick to because in my mind, that's what, what are most of our terms? Three or four years?
They're all three years.
Do they vary? Three years. So that's a nine, nine to 10 years of someone on a commission, which I think is a reasonable time to get up to speed and be really, you know, a valuable member. I, I'm also interested in though, in getting some input in staff. I don't know if staff has input. And I don't see a lot of staff on here that have, you know, that work with the commissions. There is value to having that historical knowledge, but at the same time, commissions can kind of get, you know, comfortable and set in their ways. And I think it's good to bring in new ideas and new people and, and get more people engaged from the community. So yeah. I guess I, I wouldn't, I agree with you, Jonathan. I think if we're going to have it on the books, we should enforce it and stick to it. But to me, two terms seems like we run up against that a lot, that it's too short. So maybe we do extend that to three terms and then we, we stick to that.
I was just gonna, Shelley, in response, I don't think staff really wants to weigh in on this. They're your advisory boards. And we are more than happy to do whatever you guys want.
Okay. I just meant as far as like the logistics and process of working with the board in general. But that's okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ingrid.
Is it, is there anything in there about taking a break after the, the terms have been served before they could serve again? That might be a way to kind of, you know, encourage and keep some people to, you know, I'll take a two-year break and then I'll pop back on. But I'm in agreement that we are a little bit more restrictive on those term limits being, you know, just enforced. And I think it, it's an opportunity for new blood to get in there. And I think it's great because I think it keeps things fresh and current.
Thanks, Ingrid. Tony?
I like, I like what Ingrid says about new blood, but I think, you know, particularly on HPC or the fireboard or other boards like the airport board, you have people who are, as you know, Jonathan, very interested in those particular things. And you know, if there were 20 people applying to be on HPC and you had some people who there, who'd been there for 20 years and were blocking it, then I would agree with you. I certainly don't want these boards to go stagnant, but like Shelley said, there's a lot of institutional knowledge that I think we lose. And then maybe we get into the Grover Cleveland situation where someone leaves for a little bit, then they come right back. So they avoid the term limit and do we care? I mean, I just am so happy that anyone's to engage in public service, the six of you, me, or any of these people in these boards that were volunteers, that I'm happy to have them. And I, I just don't feel comfortable like Ms. Doll from HPC sort of kicking her out because she's been there a long time. It's good that she's been there a long time. She knows a lot and she can contribute a lot. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't have new blood too. But I think there's a balance and maybe we, I, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that if we have it there, we should enforce it. So maybe it's time to get rid of it. Thanks.
Well, and thanks for that, Tony. And I, I, I think that historical background, you know, all of our boards and commissions are staffed. So in theory, Gretchen Rice, who's been with the city for a number of years, should serve as, as that bridge. But I'd say specifically with the historical preservation commission, Maristel's on her sixth term, Ron Carsonson's on his fifth term. Ed Chisholm will be applying shortly for his fourth term. That's a lot of institutional knowledge. And I would say that when you don't have vacancies on a board or commission, people from the community who, who are kind of dabbling and thinking, well, it'd be, it might be nice to be involved in some way. If they don't see a vacancy, then the de facto is I have to compete against this person or it's a competitive process. And it was for me and I'll just speak for me. I looked at a park and rec commission about eight years ago. And I was like, oh, you know, there's no openings. And if there was, I would be wanting to serve, but I don't want to kick somebody else out. And so that's, I think, one of the reasons for it. I think Shelley having a third term for that, allowing for that. I think our code allows that because it says currently, unless deemed vital. I think that each, each board and commission can have someone deemed vital for that third term and then that third term only. I think having a majority of a, of a board or commission be on there, each person be on there for nearly a decade does not do what we want to have. But I would suggest, and maybe we can put this, and I've put this forth as an, as an actual, not a motion, but an actual suggestion is that if somebody is term limited after six years and is not deemed vital, that they have one year. Right now for city council, you can be on city council as long as you want. You just have to take a four-year break. So Matt Steckler and, and Leo McKinney and, and, you know, they're, they're, they're back up and they can challenge us again and be on city council here in a couple of months. And, and I think at least the way I interpret it is that, you know, typically someone get off for three years. I would suggest that we allow people that we, we hold to our code after six years or nine years for the one person that we deem vital. And say, you have to sit out for a year. Now, if you still want to get back on, that's fine. But again, these are all public meetings. Our code says these are public meetings. We just went through this with Carl and our transportation commission that these are open for the public and the public has to attend. If people are that interested for 12 months, they should still be able to jump in and continue to serve as an advisory role. And you know what? After a year, if that position is not filled, then that tells me two things. One, that person can jump right back in and be reappointed and we can consider them. Or two, I, like the airport board, there's three, there's five positions and there's only three people that are actually on the board legitimately right now. If there's no more than that people that are interested in the entire community, because we do advertise for it. Maybe that board, I'm not saying the airport, I'm not saying the airport board. But I'm saying is there's potentially other boards that if there's only four or five people in the entire community that are interested in it and we cannot get more people interested in, then how vibrant and viable is that actual board to continue to staff and to take staff time and energy and our energy to have? Or is it just kind of a meeting of people who like to talk about things? Charlie?
Yeah, I just real quick comment, you know, I guess my, thinking about what some others have said. I, I started out on the financial advisor board and then, well, the DDA, then financial advisor board, the transportation. And I've seen a lot of turnover in all three of those agencies over the last, since 2008, when I really started, I think it was on the DDA, 2008. I just, I think the vibrancy has really been good. I think transportation's a good example of that. When I first got on there, went to a lot of meetings and I didn't see a lot being done of that. We looked at priority list over and over and over again. That group is really engaged right now. And we'll, I'll talk about that later in my, my council comments. But they're really engaged in what's going on. They got subcommittees and we've got a lot of new people on that that are doing a lot of good things. And so keeping that turnover is not bad. There are going to be, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, there are going to be things where people don't, we just can't get people to be on. I think it's, don't we have a building board of appeals or something? I'm not sure, you know, that that's going to be one we're going to be able to fill without getting the same people doing it because they don't really beat that often. And that may not be one that's engaged in this, in this group. I can't remember. Anyway, my view would be two or three terms, no discretion. And that's where you ought to go. I don't like the idea of saying, well, if we think you're vital, then we're going to let you spend another term. I think we just say two terms, three terms or no terms, one of those.
Other comments?
I, I would also say there's some, you know, uncomfortable times where we're looking forward to, or other members of the board are looking forward to the time where somebody's term limited. So, you know, that, that dynamic does happen. And, and I, I guess, I guess Charlie, I'm, I'm kind of, I guess my proposal and, and people can, you know, pick it apart or, or suggest something else would be we limit it to two terms. We allow one person and one person only to be deemed that vital person. Cause I think that does have a place. I saw that with Marco. I think Ingrid could talk about Marco being deemed criggled, especially if you have a board that has a lot of turnover recently. And you have somebody that really would be vital to the continuance and vibrancy of that board. I do want to allow for that. But within a very specific context of having it just be that one last third term and only one per board. So not everybody gets that third term. And I would say that any board member can sit out one year and then get right back on if that board has not moved on or been able to fill it, just so that does create that vacancy and that opportunity for other people. So that, that would be my, I guess, formal proposal. Take it apart, Ingrid.
Am I really up? I thought someone, I thought Paula was before me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, I saw your hand before you. That's, I didn't know Paula. Sorry, Paula. It's okay. Go ahead, Ingrid.
No problem. So Ingrid, Paula, what do you want?
Go ahead, Ingrid. I, I, I get to, to you, Paula.
I will address the, the planning and zoning board, just because I'm so familiar with it and say that, you know, Marco was invaluable. Just because he knew the structure so well, he made the quasi judicial boards, I think, more efficient and more effective and had a history of understanding it. So I can definitely get behind the idea of having someone deemed essential. And actually, all of what you've said, I, I like it. The only thing that I would like to add is that if a board position has not been filled within a certain, you know, we, we put it out there. We, we let people know that there's a vacancy and not maybe wait a year. Because some of those boards, you know, having one missing member, I think that that can have an impact. So maybe there's a six-month window and if it hasn't been filled within six months, that that person, maybe that one-year wait time is no longer, you know, implied.
Okay, thanks. Now Paula? Sorry about that.
No problem. I, I prefer the three terms. And I like what Charlie said about no qualifications, but listening back and forth. I'm okay with moving with that if that's a general consensus. I do like the idea of what Ingrid just brought up. I was going to say allowing that one-year absence would, as an advisor role would be great, but I don't want our boards to kind of be stuck on, we have empty seats. So maybe six months is it, maybe a year, but really allowing them and letting them know you have an opportunity to come back in within a year. If nobody fills that seat is important. But it just feels like we have a number of boards that having three-year, three, three-year terms, is that correct? I just want to make sure I'm getting this right. Having nine years is good service.
Currently, we allow for two, three-year terms.
Right. And I'm saying Shelley's option of three, three-year terms still seems like a, a good solution.
Okay. Sorry. I thought you were asking what we had currently. So.
Okay.
All right. Steve, I haven't heard from you. I'd, I'd like to hear from you if you had something to contribute, but if you don't, I'm not going to pressure you. I'm going to stand here looking at you awkwardly until you do.
There you go. Okay. I, I don't really have a strong opinion about this at all. So I've, I've been kind of quiet. I think there are people that, you know, have great institutional knowledge that should be on these boards and, and, but I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. I don't, I'm not sure I care. So there you go. So there you go. I'm a definite.
Clear as mud. Can we just have you give staff direction then?
Yeah, no.
Well, so we we have the, I think, the the Shelley three term, the Shelley-Paula three term, the the, I guess I'll say the the Jonathan two terms with the alternative, with the option to designate somebody as vital to serve the third term. We have the wait out six months or wait out a year option. Where are we at, folks?
I think Charlie had the, Charlie's actually the one who came up with the three-term deal. But I don't want to speak for him. I am.
Okay. Charlie, do you want to speak for you?
I had to find that mute button to speak. I I think that was just a suggestion. I just don't like the discretionary part of it. I agree with, you know, the comments that if we got a vacancy and nobody's applied, and we have passionate time when those people want to come back, that we don't have to wait a full year. Three or six months, I would think we could get by. But, you know, without a full board on someone, it's like planning zoning, for instance. We couldn't find somebody there, right? I think planning zoning and shovel boards like that, they're going to be not hard to fill at any time because they're very desirable positions to hold within the city.
And I believe, just just as an unspoken, that we have like 11 boards currently, varying degrees of activity. But I think almost all of them, with the exception, maybe one or two, have alternates. So there's not vacant spots. And and in fact, most of the boards that we have have alternates sitting there waiting. And we do promote people from alternate to the main one quite often. So I I just don't want people or the public to think that we're sitting here with, you know, a completely dysfunctional board system where there's multiple vacancies on every board. That's just, that's not the case. So what are people's thoughts? I I'm looking, I'm looking, I mean, I've made a proposal. I think, you know, Shelley's kind of made a proposal. What are people thinking? Go ahead, Shelley.
I'll just weigh in also. I find that whole, you know, deeming someone essential as awkward. And it's a, because it seems like if we're going to have a limit, let's let's have a limit and put a term limit on it. Because, you know, otherwise, someone could be deemed essential for 15, 20 years. And and where do you draw that line? So, yeah, I'd rather go for the hard stop and then do a six to 12 months. If you've been off that long, you can reapply.
And and my suggestion was if we did do, and I'm fine with that. And I think my suggestion was if we did deem somebody essential, it'd be for one term and one term only. So that would be the only person that could serve the the decade. But you you know, I guess if maybe, maybe this is a compromise, maybe this isn't. But if we want to do the two, two, or the two, three-year terms with a six-month wait in between before that seat can be filled again, yeah, I'd prefer a year. But if if that's a case that folks can get behind that, that's fine. If not, then if we wanted to go the three, three terms and and do more of a decade of service, then I would be more, I I would push more for that that one year sit out. And by sit out, I mean, they can still attend the meetings and participate, they just don't have the actual vote. Go ahead, Ingrid.
I would like, I'm behind the the term limits that Shelley proposed. Although I do think that we, I think that there's a little bit of muddiness in in this vacancy concept. And what I'm understanding it to be is that someone who has served can't reapply for one full year between the time they served and the time they applied. Now, if there's a vacancy and we can't fill that vacancy, then by six months, if the vacancy hasn't been filled, they can reapply, just so that we don't have empty boards, which I agree with you. I think most of these boards, there's not, that's not a huge challenge. I I'm going to address the essential person and just say that that would be up to our discretion. It's kind of like a variance. We don't have to grant it. If we, you know, if we're going to vote on it, we have the discretion to say, sorry, we're not going to deem you essential. But in, it gives us that opportunity in our language of, you know, to say, if we want to do that, we can, which I like that. I like that opportunity because we may at some point in time feel that there's value. But if we do that hard stop, then we have to follow that code.
And and I see that value too, but I don't see that value if we do three terms. I I don't see, no one's so valuable, they need to be on any border commission for 12 years.
And I'm in total agreement, total agreement on that.
Well, and and we need to remember too, that even though, you know, the maximum would be three terms, we don't have to reappoint for three terms if someone's not fitting in with the commission. Or, you know, we don't have to reappoint for that third term.
And I agree, but we always, we usually, we usually do. And and that's why we have, like, in historical preservation, is people are on there for four, five, and six terms because they're willing, they're able, they're nice, they're productive. We just do, you know? It's it's very hard to tell somebody who's nice and who's contributed, no.
And that's, but it's also hard to tell in a small town, someone who's nice and who's contributed, that they're not essential. So I see that being.
And that's where we have to look at the board and say, you know, Ingrid, I'm sorry, you're fantastic on P and Z, but, you know, we think Marco is more essential in his terms coming up in a year, and we're going to designate him. We just have to make those hard decisions. I think in a small town, we also want to encourage. I, you know, being somebody who jumped right into city council, never served in on a border commission, I'm going to say something, but I think it would be great, you know, when we look around for new city council people to lead the city, we should be looking to our boards and commissions. So I think getting more people involved at that level of of interest and expertise is one of the things that we need to do to expand the pool of people that would potentially consider jumping into the big chair. And I think that having vacancies and having turnover is healthy for that. So I don't know. So so somebody give some direction, because I think everyone knows where I'm at.
All right, I'm just going to intervene.
Please. Painful.
Yeah, a little bit. Let's just do a quick, so that I know what I'm drafting. Quick straw poll for three terms and a hard limit, no special designations, there's no franchise players.
Franchise players, I like that.
Okay. All right. I don't think I need to ask another question.
Well, Ingrid, you, you, sorry.
Yeah.
I didn't see, was that a quick hand?
I'm going to say I'm fine with that. I mean, I actually, I like Shelley's point. I liked your point. I can see how it actually muddies up our dialogue when we have to say no to somebody. I I think that keeping it clean, getting new blood is really important and healthy. And also, the more people who serve on these boards and commissions and see the energy and time that gets put into it are more compassionate to what we all do and go out into the world and hopefully do good. So I'm I'm good with that.
Okay. I I would just note that still means that they serve longer than you guys can serve on city council. So anyway, we will put something together and come back with that. And Jonathan can argue when it's an ordinance in front of him.
That's great. Yeah, I think that's fantastic. Let's put it in front of us, and we'll talk about that when it's in orders. But I think we, I think we have enough, at least at this point, where you can draft something for us, right?
I I can. It's really easy. And I appreciate that. That's why I started with that one first. All right. Thanks, guys.
All right. Thank you, guys. We are, man, only eight minutes behind. I think we're winning in life. We will reconvene at 6:10. Enjoy your dinner.